Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Cupertino Planning Commission meeting of September 10th, 2024. If you will join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Deputy Clerk, can you please do the roll call?
Of course. Commissioner Manipatla?
Yes.
Commissioner Mistri?
Here.
Commissioner Sharf?
Here.
Vice Chair Linskog?
Here.
Chair Fung?
Here. The next item on the agenda tonight is approval of the meeting minutes from our prior meeting, which was in June 2024, June 11th, 2024. Could please take a minute to review?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
All right, please vote with your lights.
The motion carries with Fung abstaining.
Yeah, he's not present. Next up, postponements. Do we have any postponements?
No postponements.
All right. That brings us to oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter within the jurisdiction of the commission and not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. In most cases, state law will prohibit the commission from making any decisions with respect to a matter not on the agenda. Do we have any cards?
We have one blue speaker card, and we have one hand raised on Zoom.
Great.
Jennifer Griffin?
Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm glad to see you all. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and I just wanted to talk for a minute about the proposal to narrow lanes on Deans Boulevard. This kind of caught me off guard because I wasn't aware this had come up, and I understand there is a meeting, I think, later this week on it. I don't have a problem with the bike lanes going on there, but I do in terms of narrowing down the lanes, particularly the one I'm really having trouble with is the northbound that takes traffic from the crossroads down past Apple Campus One and on to 280. I remember when that campus was built and you had a tremendous amount of traffic there. There's always been a lot of tech buildings down there, and I think that that lane is important because it provides a stacking lane for extra traffic that is going down to those tech buildings, going to Apple at various times. If you guys have been down there in the morning and the evening at various times, it is just a hullabaloo down there. I mean, you're not sure what's going on, and I think it's much safer to have, well, and also, the Catholic Church is down there, there's a children's school. I think it's much safer to have that extra lane available to divert a lot of the extra traffic that maybe ultimately is heading toward 280 and get it out of the way of the through traffic that is going from Saratoga to Sunnyvale. I mean, it's called Saratoga Sunnyvale Road since 1850, I think. And it's not a coincidence that the downtown area, the crossroads, has four lanes. That was traditionally the main road of West Side, which is what Cupertino was called in the late 1800s. That was pretty much where two major roads went through, and it was not incorporated until 1952 as Cupertino, but it had been a town crossing. Also, the other side of the road has a fourth lane on it, and I think that it's important also. You also have to get emergency vehicles through that intersection because the fire station is just around the corner, and believe me, I saw Semple pass in front of the fire truck the other day. We have a lot of people that don't understand that you have to get out of the way of emergency vehicles. I think for safety, we need to keep that lane. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. On Zoom, we have San R. Welcome, San.
Evening, Chair Fung and Commissioners. It's been a while. Hope you're all doing well. I want to pick up from where Jennifer left off. Did you know that in the city of Palo Alto, the Planning Commission also has the Transportation Charter? And so this is actually a possible expansion for your charter. Over the last year, many of your meetings have been canceled because of lack of agenda. As you know, Cupertino has no transportation-focused committee or commission. The Bike and Ped is not a transportation committee. A hundred percent of its commissioners and attendees are focused on bike lanes and safety of bike lanes. The representation is not adequate for the Transportation Charter for Cupertino, a city of 60,000-plus and growing. And I invite you to agendaize a future item for the Planning Commission to study the Palo Alto Planning and Transportation Commission Charter and look at proposing an expansion of the Planning Commission Charter to include Transportation Commission so that Cupertino residents may actually have a first-class commission that is focused on the Transportation Charter for Cupertino and one that is not biased towards only one constituent, which is a small fraction of Cupertino's population, namely the bikers. I understand that one such avid bicyclist and bicyclist supporter is on your commission, but I trust the greater judgment of all of the commissioners here to represent the greater good for Cupertino. So please look at the Charter for Palo Alto Transportation and Planning Commission. I also want to switch topics real quickly to the focus on the new Builders' Remedy Project at Vista Hills. Vista Hills is an abandoned quarry, an abandoned quarry that needs remediation, and let us not transact remediation on the back of a Builders' Remedy Project. Let us deny the project based on environmental grounds until the abandoned quarry has been fully remediated. I also want to bring to your attention that there are reports that there have been trees taken down and soil runoffs that are happening that may put some of that gradient at risk, which may further impact some of the soil that leads into Linda Vista Park. So I urge you to please have code enforcement inspect what is happening on that site and whether the tree should be allowed to be taken down and what sort of soil impact and environmental impact this is causing. Please make sure that the Planning Commission has input on this by explicitly requesting to agendaize this item for a future Planning Commission agenda. We have seen a lot of cancellations over the last year, and I ask the commissioners to proactively think about putting items on agenda that we, the residents, want you to discuss so that your time is not given back and canceled. Thank you very much.
Thank you, San. There are no more hands raised on Zoom.
Very good. Let's see, our agenda is showing there's no consent calendar items tonight, so it's time to go to public hearings. Item two on our agenda tonight is a conditional use permit to allow an arcade use in a 1955 square foot unit within the Marketplace Shopping Center and associated environmental review. This is application numbers U2024001. The applicant is Kittleton, Inc., and the location is 19720 Stevens Creek Boulevard, APN 36906012. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Chair Fung, members of the commission. I will be turning this over to John Martier, Senior Planner, who's project manager for both of the items tonight. There will be a staff presentation. I believe the applicant is here as well for the first item, so I assume they would want to do a presentation after that. So turn it over to John.
Thank you, Luke. John Martier, Senior Planner, Community Development Department. Good evening to the city of Cupertino, the chair and the planning commissioners as well. So let me just see if I can successfully transfer my laptop over to everybody. Got it. All right, good evening again. As Chair Fung introduced, this is a conditional use permit to allow commercial entertainment use within the existing Marketplace Shopping Center. So a little background and analysis, as you can see on the satellite photo, that is the Marketplace Shopping Center with Portal Avenue to the west of the site and bounded by Stevens Creek Boulevard to the north. The, I'll circle for you as well, to this area right there, that's the red rectangle is the general location of where this arcade, this 1,995-square-foot arcade is going to be located at, right here. So, there you go. And so this business is called Kilton, and it's a Japanese business that makes mini crane machines, which is, they have about 200-plus locations within Japan, something over 150 in the United States, with 35 or more within California alone. So it's not your typical arcade where you have video games and dance machines or pinball or whatnot. I'm probably dating myself at this point, when I was a kid, but these are like, really, just kind of like little mini claw machines and whatnot, and what they're proposing is pretty much about 64 of these mini crane machines of various sizes within this unit, which was, which used to be occupied by a karate studio right next to Legends Pizza. The municipal code does require Planning Commission review for commercial entertainment establishments such as these. So a really quick analysis. So we always look at, you know, the parking requirement, as you saw, that was attached to the business plan, that they did a parking analysis of the Marketplace Shopping Center, and the way the municipal code does arcades is consistent with the retail requirement, which is one space for every 250 square feet or eight spaces. A few conditions that have been added by staff to this is that a Class II bicycle parking space is to be located within the vicinity of the unit. And to reinforce a previous use permit, there is a limit to this shopping center is where new food services that are within the vicinity that joins a rear corridor, adjacent single-family homes can be. So hot food cannot be prepared between, pretty much a Marukai Market up into where the marketplace starts to bend, and if you need more clarification on that point, I'm more than happy to bring up the satellite photo again to show you where that is. The hours of operation? Absolutely, Commissioner. So let me just go back really quick. So pretty much from here to here. So what the condition says is basically if one restaurant use swaps out for an existing restaurant use within that area of the marketplace, that's fine, but if, like, for example, this unit was a karate studio, if they wanted to come in and do, I don't know, a Thai restaurant, another Thai restaurant, or where they prepare hot foods and whatnot, that would not be allowed according to the prior use permit. So this condition is basically reinstating that condition, the prior condition of approval to ensure that no hot food be served on the site.
For the existing one, okay.
Precisely. So if Legends wears the switch out to, I don't know, another type of Italian food, that's fine.
What if there's an existing restaurant that switches to something else, and can it go back to the restaurant later on?
That's a great question. I would say no. It has to be a continuation of use, and that was the intent of the modification of the use permit back in 2007 at the time. So the environmental assessment, this is sequoia exempt, meaning that under the 15301 existing facilities, Class 1. The findings, when you render your decision, are two when it comes to use permits. The first is that the proposed development and/or use at the proposed location will not be detrimental or injurious to property or improvements in the vicinity, and will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, general welfare, or convenience. And the second, last one, the proposed development and/or use will be located and conducted in a manner in accord with the Cupertino general plan, any applicable specific plans underlying zoning regulations, and the purpose of this title, and complies with the California Environmental Quality Act. The recommended actions, as staff recommends, that the Planning Commission adopt the proposed draft resolution and approve the use permit, which also finds a project exempt from sequoia and that. And the next steps, excuse me, should the project be approved, the Planning Commission's decision on this project is final unless an appeal is filed within 14 calendar days of the day of this decision. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions from the commission?
Excuse me, Chair, maybe the commissioners can describe any visit visits or expert communications or anyone on the subject before these are asking questions.
Okay. Anybody?
Yeah, I visited the site yesterday. I mean, there's nothing to see. What concerned me is there's a sign in the business that says that this hearing will be, I believe, July 23rd. So I wonder why is there a sign in the window of the business? Is that required, or was that optional, or why is it there?
So the conforming sign per the municipal code is actually on Stevens Creek Boulevard with the correct date and location. Originally, this item was supposed to be heard on the July 23 hearing, but there was no quorum for the hearing, so it had to be postponed out. That sign was put there, not by error, but it was put there originally by the applicant, probably late June, I believe, and staff made them put the correct one by Stevens Creek Boulevard, and that sign was just left up incidentally.
Right. I mean, I'm thinking, most people would not, if they were in that shopping center, they would see the sign on the business, but they're probably not out on Stevens Creek trying to figure out, you know, which unit in the shopping center is proposing this. I just wish that it had been, that sign had been replaced too, but yeah, I understand that legally, you don't have to do that.
Any other reports, visits? I did not either. All right. I think the applicant's present, if you'd like to give a presentation, you're welcome to do so. I believe you have 10 minutes, up to 10 minutes. I think, given the crowd, it shouldn't be too hard if you want to speak less.
Can I hear?
They'll turn it on.
Okay, good. My name is Yoshi Murata. I'm the business department team, and I'd like to introduce, you know, what kind of business we are. So I brought over my PC, and then I can show you the screen, how it looks like, and if you have any questions, I try to answer to you, everybody. And thank you very much for today, for setting up the meeting, and then I hope, you know, everything's well, but let me show the business model. Okay, just a moment. This is our company business model. I will show you, you know, how it looks like, and this is just, you know, the format of the store layout, and depend upon the sizes, it's going to be changing, but basically, this is kind of the type of the, you know, stores we're operating in the U.S. And this is also company profile. Okay, our headquarters is located in Dallas, in Texas, and we started expanding the business in California, and we opened the San Francisco in Japan Center. Last year, we opened up. This is the first store in Northern California, and we choose Cupertino as the, this is the new area for the southern side, and we believe Cupertino City is nice, good educations, and good mix of the, you know, people, nationalities, and good business development. So we, this is, we decided this is one of the best places in, you know, south side of the, you know, Bay Area. And then we apply for this UP, and then we're waiting for the approval right now. Okay. And this is our parents' company in Japan, it's called Janda, and we, in Japan, Janda has about 80% of the share for the amusement arcade business in Japan, and the company made the decisions 2019 between the COVID period, and they started up the, you know, opened the Kittleton stores, and then right now, we're operating about over 200 stores in the U.S. right now. Yeah. So this is our target, we made it, so. And this is the state we're operating in the U.S. at this moment. And we're talking about the game, you know, concept, but all the figures is Japanese anime goods, and right now, the anime cultures is getting growing in the U.S. right now, especially though the younger people. So we believe, you know, our products and then kind of the concept is very acceptable to the young generation people right now, and we hope, you know, we can bring other clients from the other cities in this area. So we like to bring over to the, you know, not only for Cupertino, for the other city, the customers coming from the other city, and then, you know, bring into our shopping center and, you know, his shopping center, and we try to, you know, there's so many restaurants here, so we can generate more revenue, you know, bring up to the city. So. And again, this is the kind of the inside of the, you know, the picture, how it looks like, so again, depending upon the space, you know, we have a different layout. And this is like all the young people, they love the, you know, this kind of the business concept too, so. And this is the demographics, area assumption about, you know, the space, 15,000 square feet to 25,000 square feet, and the sales-wise is, you know, this is like a, just average about $50 per square feet range, and we estimate it of the, you know, monthly revenue, $120,000 a month, and we pay the sales tax to the state, that's bring to the, you know, Santa Clara counties, I believe. And this is the other, this is one of the Japan, and they have the open space, but Cupertino, this store is, we have doors, it's closing in the front. Okay, and one of the things is the noise of the equipment itself. We have a control for the volume, so we can control any volumes, like a less and then maybe zero. Each equipment has all the control for the volume itself, because the machine gave some of the noise, but, you know, we don't want to have any issue for the, you know, all the residential people in, you know, Cupertino, the city. So we can control everything with the sound also. Okay. And that's all I can explain today. Is any questions or anything, you know, I'd like to hear from you guys?
This is more of a curiosity question. How does payment work? Is it credit cards, or do they get like a?
Well, it is only the credit card and the cash box, and there's the, what do you call the, a suspender for the coins, for the client how to buy the coin. Okay, so we have, you know, they can pay by credit card, or they can pay their cash, and then we calculate it for the order sales, you know, every, like, every day or sometimes, you know, two times, and then we keep the order record, and then we submit to the, you know, state and then the federal for the sales tax. So we paying for just regular sales tax.
Okay.
Right.
Oh, so the sales tax, is that, if somebody wins something, the value of the item, or is it sales tax just to play the game?
Yes. Our concept is the, we don't sell the merchandise, but we sell the coins. That's our, you know, here. So every time the customer buy and the coins, and then we feel like, coin is like a merchandise for us.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
So you had a slide on the sales. It said $50 per square feet, and then you're showing $120,000. So is it $50 per square feet per month, or per day? How is that math work?
Okay, that $50 square feet per month.
By month?
Yeah.
And so they have 2,000 square feet, so.
Right.
And do you work all seven days, or close on seven days? Okay.
We are, yes.
And?
Go ahead.
So, and you showed another chart that showed, you know, 2021, and then, you know, 2024, there's 200. Is that the number of stores? Yeah, this one?
Yes.
Oh, in U.S., so?
Yes, that's in U.S. Because again, we established the company 2019.
Okay.
Under the COVID, you know, COVID, before the COVID, right. And then we hit the COVID 2020, it's very difficult to open.
Yeah.
Yes.
And in Japan, you know, for how long this has been there?
How long establishment?
Yeah.
Okay, that's. Okay, I didn't say anything.
Maybe.
Yeah. It was the 2000, I believe, by the 14s.
Okay.
Yes.
So for about 10 years, you've been in Japan, been expanding here for the last four years.
Right.
Last question on the noise, right? So do you have, is it all closed on all sides, like doors, or are the doors open on the front or on the back?
Well, door is closing, basically.
Okay.
Okay, and then, but when you're getting inside, it's kind of a noise.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, I'm talking about, you know, equipment, is there like a sound?
Yeah.
Like, you know, game center, you go to see a lot of, you know, volumes, you know, hearing some of the sound, music, whatever, but this equipment has the, each single equipment has the volume control.
Okay.
So whatever the city has the regulation of the noise, okay, and then we can, we can make, you know, we just want to make sure we shouldn't any violate for the sound, so we can, you know, volume's down and then meet the city's requirement.
So if I'm walking by this store in the front side, would I know, let's say, you know, the doors are closed, right? Would I know that, you know, there is new things?
I don't think we answer you close, and then you don't hear.
Absolutely nothing.
Yeah, I don't think so.
And what?
Because we are not playing loud, not loudly, you know, because of kids, you know, they like, you know, too noisy, it's not good for them, so we, you know, keep this quiet as much we can.
And that's true for even the residents that are living behind that?
That's right.
Okay.
Yes.
Probably last question. So why did you choose Cupertino, if some other city?
I'm sorry?
Why did you choose Cupertino?
Choose?
This?
Cupertino?
This location, yeah.
This location? Okay. Well, I used to be starting up the business, U.S. in Daiso. Do you know Daiso? No? Okay. Marukai, you know Marukai, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I was really close to the founder of Marukai, and I also started up the business in the U.S. for Daiso stores in the U.S. And then I picked, you know, we picked Cupertino because of the education-wise, it's very good, you know, people and the safety, and then also the. And then also the economic, you know, in here, this Cupertino is getting grow, growing right now. So that's the main reason. And then education is very important because the people who live in this area, very safety. And then that's the main reason. And then location wise is very good because it kind of the easy to access to the San Jose and easy to access to San Francisco because they have two eighties freeways. So it, it is good location for the, you know, traffic wise as well.
Thank you. Welcome to Cupertino.
Yes, thank you.
I was curious, can you tell me about the staffing when you're operating the, operating the shop?
Uh, we are trying to hire you by ten people. Yes.
And how many would normally be there during, during operating hours?
Well, during the operation time, probably maybe two a day. Yes.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Uh, so I guess we could bring it back up for. Oh, yes, excuse me. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have one blue speaker card and one hand raised on Zoom. Welcome, Jennifer.
Just take it out. Yeah, okay, I just take it out.
Good evening again, Planning Commission. That was a very nice presentation and I'm always glad to see family entertainment venues come into Cupertino because there's lots of kids and we want to have kids be happy and families come to shopping centers. And I think that this shopping center has a lot of things going on there. The, the main issue, and I'm glad that Mr. Mar, Marukai, yeah, explained what this concept was, because it reminds me a lot of like the boardwalk in Santa Cruz or an arcade at things that we've had over the years at parks and things like that. But I just want, and then I, we do have Chuck E. Cheese across the street, which has been there for a long period of time. I just wanted to ask, actually, a couple of the questions had been explained. One of them was the concept of how the children actually access the toys inside the little, I mean, if this is like Denny's with the little crane, you know, that I never could pick up anything. If you, so the, the first question I had was, does, when people come in the front doors, do the parents buy like a certain number of coins that the children will use while they're in the arcade? And then how, how does that work for the kids? Do they put them in each machine? I, I couldn't really tell. It looked like there were tall machines for older children and shorter machines for little children. The other situation I would be concerned about was that you're going to have a lot of children here and you want to make sure that they're supervised, that parents are with them. Because to me, if the children weren't adequately supervised, this could become a target for all sorts of things. I mean, and I, we have things around town, obviously, that where the children are supervised. But what I was concerned about, I know that Chuck E. Cheese has a check-in and checkout for the children with adults, et cetera. They do have an arcade there. I've been in that many times with my godson and other family members. And I would be concerned about how, if there were parents, there probably should be a rule that parents cannot let their children run around without supervision. I recommend that they keep more staff members on site. How are the front doors set up? This looks like it might be great in an open mall, but you're going to be having glass doors in the front out to a sidewalk. I would be concerned about security. And then you're probably going to have a lot of children with scooters. And please make sure there are places for old parents to sit down while they're watching their kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Welcome, San Ar.
Good evening, Chair Feng and Commissioners. I would invite you to do a Google Maps review look up on Kittleton, look up a Yelp review on Kittleton. I have never seen so many one stars given to a business on Yelp or Google Maps. I was quite surprised because I was actually looking forward to the addition of an arcade beyond Chuck E. Cheese. It appears there are a number of complaints against Kittleton that you can read for yourself on Yelp reviews and Google Map reviews. And they are all, most all, one star and two star. And so those complaints range from the games being completely unwinable and the machines being weak and unable to actually lift to enable a win, to being rip-offs in billing and token payments, to being credit cards charged the day after. And so I understand that planning cannot deny permits based on consumer reviews. However, I want to bring this to your attention so that all Commissioners are fully aware of what kind of business you would be allowing into Cupertino based on the reviews. Cupertino needs an arcade. However, we do not want to scam it's going to our kids in Cupertino based on the reviews that you're reading. And I urge you to look at if you cannot deny on grounds that are within your scope, perhaps the business license can be denied in ways that prevent the permit from being used for actually operating a business of this kind that has nearly universal one star. We welcome an arcade, we would like an arcade, Los Altos has a fantastic arcade, I visit that with my kid very often. And unfortunately, we are taking our business to Los Altos downtown and not to Cupertino and reading the reviews, we will continue to do that unless you are able to have your economic development team invite businesses that are scrupulous and well-rated so that the kids of Cupertino do not feel cheated. I hope Commissioners will look at reviews and see what can be done here. Thank you.
Thank you, San. There are no more hands raised on Zoom.
All right, I think we can bring this back up for discussion now. Please, if there are any comments, please go ahead.
Yeah. You know, when I first saw this on the agenda, I'm thinking, all these crane machines and all these restaurants and places where, you know, it's basically impossible for anyone to win anything. And as the speaker on Zoom pointed out, yeah, if you look at the reviews of Kittleton on Yelp of San Francisco, that's the overwhelming complaint. The kids leave sad, it's nearly impossible to win anything. You know, it, it's almost like gambling for children. And personally, I don't think that's the best use of this retail space at, at Marketplace. Thanks.
Nobody else? No other comments? Do we have a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion. I'm going to make a motion to recommend that the Planning Commission adopts a proposed draft resolution, attachment one, to approve the use permit U two zero two four dash zero zero one, which also finds the project exempt from CEQA. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Great. Any, any further discussion? I guess how come it, you know, I feel that the project is compliant with the application, you know, by all criteria which we would judge it. Yeah, there is a question perhaps about is it going to be a great business or not? We don't make decisions based on social media. So, you know, I hope that, you know, I, you know, I, I think that it seems like a compliant use and I hope that, that it does well.
Can I, I'll, I'll add another comment, I guess. Thank you for that. I would hope that we're not going to go through every single business in the city and look at all the ones that have one stars and, and tell them we can't renew their licenses. That's a pretty slippery slope and, and like, what about two star? Is that acceptable? How about three stars? Or, you know, do we only kick out businesses that have two and a half stars and below? That seems a very subjective thing and definitely outside the scope of anything the Planning Commission can do.
So I just, if you look at the conditional use permit, therefore, the development will not be interest to property or, and detrimental to public health and safety. So just, you know, to me, no, it's not about reviews, it's about, but it is about, you know, the history of the business and, and yeah, is it legitimate? So I, I would think we would have the authority to deny it based on those two factors. But obviously, I'm in the minority, so thank you.
Are you ready? Any other comments? If not, please vote with your lights.
The motion carries with Mahdi Patla and Sharif voting no.
Great, thank you very much. We will now move on to item three on the agenda. This is proposed amendments to the municipal code, chapters nineteen point oh four, which general provisions nineteen point oh eight, definitions in nineteen point six zero, general commercial zones, G C zones. This is application number M C A two oh two four oh oh two. The applicant is the city of Cupertino. The location is citywide. If we get a staff report, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Feng. Yes, and thank you for introducing the item. And so here's my brief presentation on this. So why are we doing these municipal code changes to our general commercial ordinance and, and associative chapters as well? Well, the general plan has as part of its guiding principles is to support a vibrant mixed-use business, businesses in the city to ensure that the city's major mixed-use corridors, such as Stevens Creek Boulevard or Deans Boulevard, even Homestead, as well their, as well as our commercial nodes are vibrant, successful and attractive. Kind of like with the prior item and whatnot, just, you know, how to encourage businesses to move into the city and whatnot. And that's further, in that, the guiding principles further reinforced within the general plan with the following policy, L U dash nine dot one dot four regulations, where it just basically says that the city will periodically review and update land use and zoning requirements for retail, commercial and office development in order to attract high-quality sales tax-producing businesses and services while adapting to the fast-changing retail, commercial and office environment. So part of analyzing what we could do, what we can do, and if we are keeping up with trends is to see what other cities are doing. So when staff took on this, this modification to our C G ordinance and the municipal code as a whole, we did look at a few other cities and, you know, particularly, you know, Palo Alto, Sunnyvale, Mountain View and Santa Clara, to just name four of the few that we, we had done. So what are the changes that staff are recommending to make? So chapter nineteen point oh four, general provisions. Again, this section was added to this chapter. And this section goes with exclusionary zoning. And this is really to clarify that uses that aren't on any land use table, not just C G, but also office as well as any of the residential chapters are considered not unpermitted, I should say, as, and so, but it does also give the, the director flexibility to make an interpretation if they make the findings to, to see if those unlisted uses are actually consistent with the intent of, of the zoning ordinance and whatnot. Chapter nineteen point oh eight, definition. So a few changes were made to this either as clarity, streamlining, or bringing the code up to date with current trends. So bar facility was an added definition. It is clarified that bar facilities are essentially strictly a facility that are located ancillary to a restaurant, yeah, type of use. It also added to this definition what a drinking establishment is. Drinking establishment was an existing definition, which essentially is a bar, standalone bar, no food served, whatnot, to this. So it, it clarified the difference between a drinking establishment and a bar facility itself. Farmer's market, we'd never had a, farmer's market has a use class within our land use table and we, and the city did not have a definition, so we added a definition and a use class to this municipal code. Food store is a, is a new definition that adds, and combines three different definitions, one for grocery store, which the city did not have, but we, but the city did have definitions for convenience market as well, especially food stores. And those are combined under a single land use or use class of food stores. And this added a lot of clarity and, and kind of corroborated a lot of gray area in terms of what's the difference between a convenience market or especially food store or grocery store. And so this kind of separated them into three different categories within a single use class. Within that, you'll notice that there are some size limitations, specialty food stores as well as limits on floor area dedicated to alcohol sales as well. Pet daycare, we had a use for pet stores. We renamed pet daycare and added this definition in there. Just again, another clarifying modification. Restaurant, we expanded the existing definition to add self-service to the existing restaurant and fast food use. So within restaurant, you had restaurant, you also had fast, fast food. Under the fast food category, under this use class, we, we added self-service to it too. Again, that's a clarifying exercise for this definition as staff runs into a lot of issues with, well, what's really considered fast food is pizza my heart fast food, is Subway fast food, you know? So those are, those are certain things and, you know, we could see those, those two examples to be more self-service and really fast food. Specialized school, it's a use class, but we never had a definition for it, so we add definition to that as well. So under chapter nineteen sixty, general commercial C G zones, within the table nineteen sixty oh three oh, permitted conditional exclude use in general commercial zoning districts, we did the following. So we eliminated specialty food stores, convenience markets and fast foods as separate use classes. And, and now they're permitted without a use permit. Prior, you would have to allow for convenience markets and fast food restaurants with a use permit, heard by the Planning Commission. Especially food stores were allowed up to fifty percent within a shopping center until they had to get a use permit, which was at the admin level. So staff has suggested we get rid of the use permit requirements for the, for those use classes. Added farmer's market as a use and, and those are approved the use permit at the admin level. Changing the approval authority for the following uses from a use permit Plan Commission to use permit admin hearing. And again, admin hearing is essentially, if, if you're not aware, at least for the public who's not aware, admin hearing is you have a hearing officer, which is our Assistant Director of Community Development, who's sitting to my right. These hearings are typically once a month on a Thursday. And they're at five o'clock in the evening. They are noticed to neighbors and they are, they do have a site sign as well, so they are public meetings. And they also are appealable. I think, are they to counsel, I believe, from the admin hearing?
Commission and counsel.
Okay. Excuse me, yeah. So the first one is eating establishment with separate bar facilities. So that still requires a use permit and so, but that would be at the admin, that we're suggesting admin hearing level and, instead of the Planning Commission. Entertainment facilities with eating establishments. Late evening activities, so currently with the ordinance, the late evening activity means anything between the eleven P M. and seven A M. Pet shops located in structures that are not soundproof. And we also moved, so outside of that, we moved outdoor display, outdoor seating standards from one section of this chapter to, into the, into the table to make it easier to read and a little more user-friendly when reading the ordinance as well. And again, a lot of these changes that you see are really to streamline the process as much as possible, as, as well as reducing costs. And to give you an example, a minor use permit that's heard in front of a planning commission is about twenty-four thousand dollars, whereas a use permit heard at an admin hearing is about ten thousand. And the last major modifications to this chapter are within table nineteen sixty oh six oh, development standards. Nothing really groundbreaking here or new. Mostly is just added language that reference standards to the general, to the existing general plan, specific plan, or any other underlying land use document where the commercial establishment is located. So for example, adding language that tied a development within this zoning, zoning land use class to height standards within the heart of the city or the general plan, as well as setback standards, lock coverage, et cetera, et cetera. Also reference standards to the landscape ordinance, municipal code chapter fourteen. You know, always had, always had landscape standards, but this time we just clarified it by adding this specific chapter, chapters that enforce those, those, those standards. And added standards for odor abatement systems in eating establishments. So depending upon where a restaurant's located, specifically with near single-family residential or any type of residential, I believe, odor abatement systems and eating establishments will be required going forward. So recommended actions that the planning commission adopted draft resolution, recommend that the city council adopt an ordinance to find that the proposed actions are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and amend the following, chapter nineteen oh four, nineteen oh eight, nineteen six zero. Next step is that the recommendations made by the planning commission will be forwarded to the city council for consideration at the October first, twenty twenty-four meeting. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, so I wanted to go back to the farmer's market definition. So I'm, I'm curious as to the seventy-five percent in the definition, where it says seventy-five percent of the booths or stalls have to be, you know, either a producer or, you know, a farm, and it has to be farm products and offered by a producer or an employee or a family member of that producer. I'm curious how you came up with that seventy-five percent, why not hundred percent?
That's a great question. So again, planners don't like to reinvent the wheel. So that's why we look at other cities to see what they have done and see if they're, you know, and identify trends with definitions and whatnot. One of the definitions we were hard-pressed to find with other jurisdictions was farmer's markets. They might have even had as a use class, but didn't really define it. So we found this draft definition from a farmer's market advocacy group. I believe it's Farmer's Market Coalition, I could be wrong on that one. And so they, they had that threshold of seventy-five percent. And again, it's within the planning commission to get rid of that threshold, augment it, or direct staff to change that further. You know, one of, one of the things we looked at was how do we differentiate a farmer's market from a swap meet or a, or something like a flea market, rather, you know? So it just, so, you know, seventy-five percent seemed reasonable to ensure that the, what's being sold at these markets are farm produce and that the, that the people selling are not like Walmart having a booth, I don't know. I don't go into farmer's markets, but that there are actual verified producers at these farmer's markets that are, that are doing this, so. So hopefully that answers your question.
Is there any sort of farmer's market coalition or like chamber out there that might give us something that's a little bit more objective instead of subjective? Meaning we just follow what every other city is doing? Because it does seem a bit arbitrary, the seventy-five percent.
Yeah, and we did pull this from one of those coalitions itself. And, you know, if it's, if this definition is causing some hesitation on a recommendation, you know, please direct staff as to what recommendations we can make. And we'd be more than happy to do that prior to going to city council.
Is there something from the state, maybe? I mean, that, yeah, it just seems like we need to find something that also may be adjusting to with the times because our seventy-five percent number today may not make any sense five years from now. And then we have to redo this instead of finding some organization that is constantly reevaluating, and we're just following what they're, what they're saying, if that makes sense.
Absolutely, and staff, staff can do that. Is there anything about the definition specifically? Is it the seventy-five percent?
It's the seventy-five percent and also the makeup of the products. Because, yeah, I understand farmer's markets are meant to be about produce and fruits and all this stuff. But if we look at our own flea market that happens in De Anza, I mean, I've been going there for thirty years. It doesn't look anything like it used to look when we were kids. Because now it's basically a commercial entity, and there's people that come from all over the place to sell all sorts of things. Most of it is not even used, it's all brand-new merchandise. So similarly, I think we may end up with a definition that makes no sense even a few years from now. Because we may not have anybody growing anything nearby that's going to come to Cupertino to sell, as an example.
Yeah, if I could just add to, and I, I don't know exactly where the seventy-five percent came from, but I know when you go to farmer's markets, there are some that have a higher percentage of like non-edible goods.
Right.
Maybe crafts, pottery, jewelry, things like that that are non-edible.
Yeah.
That kind of fit that farmer's market mode. I know I've been to somewhere that's a lot of it, and somewhere it's almost none.
Yeah.
So it may be just a matter of how much, when you say farmer's market, are you focused on food products?
Right.
So there is a certified farmer's market organization. It would be great to look at what their definition is of what a certified farmer's market is. So I did a little bit of Googling, not long, I will admit. I wasn't able to find the definition from Mountain View or other cities, but I did find Palo Alto. And I'll read it to you. It says, so this is in Palo Alto Municipal Code eighteen point oh four point zero three zero, line fifty-five. Farmer's market means a market certified by the state or county agricultural commission under title three, chapter three, article six point five of the California Administrative Code, which allows direct retail sale by farms to the public of such items as fruits, vegetables, nuts, eggs, honey, nursery stock, cut flowers, live animals, and inspected meats and seafood. So that's what Palo Alto uses. So there's no percentage. It sounds like, in essence, it's really only for farm products, right, of whatever kind. I'm okay with that, but it would be good to know what the, the seventy-five percent feels really arbitrary. So I would love to find out what the, there's an organization in California that certifies farmer's markets. What is their definition? And, and can we, can we revisit it at that point and look at what that definition is?
I have another follow-up question. So if we're redefining what farmer's markets are, have we defined what some of the other types of markets are already within? And you are meaning, do we have something separate for flea markets? Do we have something separate for like a weekend market? Because it seems a bit strange that we're calling this out in such specific detail. Do we have specific definitions for everything else?
We do not, you know, we, we felt pressed to add one for farmer's market just because it's become, last few years, a big, a big desire for, to have more farmer's markets or to, or retain really what we have already in the city. So we don't get the same sense from a flea market. It seems like De Anza has a monopoly on that.
Right. I think we just need to be, yeah, just a little bit careful because, you know, it's like, I go to fairs and I'll see, you know, the insurance booth and the, or the solar, you know, like, and I've seen them at the farmer's market too, right? It's like the, the solar roofing people that have a booth at the farmer's market. And maybe that's okay, I don't know. But is there a standard that's being used that we can follow so that our farmer's markets are not half flea market and half farmer's market? You know, so they are more authentically farmer's markets?
No, sorry, one more curiosity question then. So I feel like it was maybe just two months ago, the Memorial Day, there was like a Japanese, oh gosh, what was it? There was a festival that happened in Memorial Park.
Cherry Blossom?
It couldn't have been Cherry Blossoms because it was much, it was not too far in the past. In any case, they had all sorts of things from.
Sister City.
Maybe that's what it was. But it was everything from the insurance company to crafts that people were selling to like Japanese, I don't know, clothing. How does something like that get defined within what we're talking about here?
Yeah, I would say that's more of a private event. You know, this is, this is more farmer's market on private property. It's recurring, it's something that's going to be there every other Saturday, every Saturday, and, and basically running with the, the land.
Got it.
Yeah, the, the city does have a special event permit. So for things that are irregular, maybe happen two times a year, once a year. And it's pretty much defined just for that event. It would get, say, building fire inspections so you don't have safety issues. But I think John's right because farmer markets tend to be recurring usually once a week at the same time. But I guess one question I would have for the commission, because I agree the seventy-five percent is just sort of picking a number. Is the concern more that it becomes less of a farmer's market and just more of an open market? Like, would you want the emphasis on farm products, I think is.
Yes, I mean, so, so this is why I like the Palo Alto definition, the municipal code, because it doesn't try and pick a number or anything like that. It just basically says, we will follow whatever the market certified by the state or county agricultural commission, their definition, we will follow their definition of what a certified farmer's market is. And that feels like, it basically says, okay, our municipal code will follow what the experts say. And I, I think that's, that's okay. I'm okay with that definition. So if, as a planning commission, we want to adopt that definition instead of trying to come up with an arbitrary number like seventy-five or whatever, and we just say basically, you know, we will accept what a certified farmer's market is by definition by the, the state or county agricultural commission, I think that's fine. So curious what other planning commissioners think about this.
I just wonder if, if we make this so prohibitive that somebody just goes and says, we're not a farmer's market, we're just a market.
So this is just to clarify questions, right?
What's that?
So we need to go to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm done.
Yeah, I just, it just seems like we're going down a path of creating bureaucracy here. I don't know why we even have to have this as a separate thing. To me, it's like, I mean, if I were running this in my parking lot and somebody's like, well, you're not at seventy-five percent, you're at fifty, well, then I would just take the word farmer's off it, and then suddenly I'm not privy to any of what you're just describing. It doesn't make sense.
You're, you're actually more the discussionary now than the.
Sorry.
We'll, we'll come back, there'll be enough to revisit that. Any other clarifying questions?
Chair Feng, is your microphone on?
Thank you, sorry about that. Any other clarifying questions?
Yeah, I do, so.
So I'm just trying to understand.
Okay, so did the other one, okay. So I understand, you know, time to time, we need to, you know, refine and keep up its changes and all that stuff. That's the driver. But what else is driving? Because, you know, we are trying to do three or four things here, right? So one, we are trying to shift authority from, you know, one place to another place. Then we are trying to reduce, you know, new definitions. And then we are changing the definitions of some of the existing ones, right? So I'm just trying to understand, you know, what's the rationale behind each of these and what's the drivers, right? I don't want us to make change for the sake of making change, right? I want to understand, you know, the drivers behind each of them.
So that's, that's a fantastic question. And again, it's, it's within the comfort level of the planning commission to make the ultimate recommendation. You know, if the planning commission, and I'll start from this point too. If the planning commission still wants to have the authority over many of these permit items that are listed, and that, that's totally fine, and we can, we can bring back recommendations to city council, and then they have the ultimate decision whether they feel comfortable with that as well. You know, it's, it, like the general plan states, it's, it's trying to streamline the process because it's, it's, our permits are not cheap. You know, I, you know, when I said, you know, the use permit, how much it costs, would, to hear it, I mean, the prior, the prior application that we heard was twenty-four thousand dollars. You know, that's what Kittleton paid to come to this hearing. You know, is that the most effective way to, to, to spend money? And, you know, could something like that, and we're not recommending something like an arcade gets heard at the admin level, we're still suggesting at the planning commission level. You know, how do we encourage things? And, you know, if, if a business, and what we've seen too, we went, you know, this also went through the, our economic development manager as well, and we interviewed some, some folks in the community, just colloquially. You know, if they have to choose between two cities and, you know, it's like, let's say, I'll just, I'll throw out Sunnyvale and Cupertino, and their process is easier, it's cheaper, it's quicker, they're going to go to Sunnyvale. So how do we retain the businesses that we have here? And how do we encourage more businesses to come into the city as well? So that's really the driving force behind a lot of this too. You know, to your other points about, you know, change of definitions and whatnot. You know, there's a lot of debate that goes on behind the scenes, well, what is this? What is, is that, you know, Safeway, you know, or some kind of grocery store? And, you know, is it, is it a specialty food store? Is it a grocery store? Or, you know, and so it's easier for, for someone to understand our zoning ordinance too if we clarify some of the definitions as well. So like farmer's market as an example, that we're just talking about. There's a big push to, to, to keep the ones we have and whatnot, and so, but we never had a use class for. So how do we approve a farmer's market? Is it a planning commission decision? Is it admin, can we do it at the admin level? And what is a farmer's market? And, you know, kid, someone who's has like five out of twenty booths selling carrots, is that a farmer's market? So I, I, I think it's, it's, it's giving people who want to come into the city understanding that what they're proposing fits our box, fits our standards, and, and knowing where they can go. And, and it helps, it helps staff streamline that process to, to pinpoint an answer rather than saying, I'll get back to you in a couple of weeks, I gotta talk to my director, and all, you know, all these types of things, come up with an interpretation, and it, by that time, they might just move on. So hopefully that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, so thanks for the clarification. So I'll, I'll give you my take a little bit, right? So I, I didn't want us to kind of, you know, do just because other cities are doing. We are different, right? There's a reason why people come here, and it's okay to have different rules because otherwise, you know, there could be only one city in California, we don't need this many cities. So, and then, in terms of, you know, definitions, the farmer's market and all that. So I certainly want farmer's market to be farmer's market, not become a flea market. I go to farmer's market now every week, enjoy thoroughly, and never go to flea market. Been there maybe a couple of times, don't like it. So, so, so I don't want farmer's market becoming, you know, yet another, and all kind of market, that's just in my view.
Perhaps we should have the public comment now.
We have one speaker in person, Jennifer Griffin, and I'm seeing one hand raised on Zoom. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, again, planning commission. This very interesting discussion. I just wanted to, I had a couple of comments. One of them, this was something under community vision. And I had seen in another city where there was something to do with community plans and the housing element, and I got really nervous. So I wanted to make sure that we weren't doing this because H C D wanted it or someone is demanding it. And I, if you could give me some nice words to make me feel really good that we're not doing this because of the housing element. But I think you were doing that. The other thing is, I, my main issue with this is the change in the permitting from the planning commission for four items down to the administrative hearing. I've been coming to these meetings since two thousand and four, and believe me, I've seen all sorts of things. And I'm really concerned about when we're taking things to do with bars and restaurants, eating establishments, late evening activities that would be regulated by the administrative hearing and not the planning commission. It's, you know, even pet shops. It, there's four things listed here. One of them was entertainment facilities within eating establishments. By far, in all the years I've been here, the most discussion I have heard from the public has been over bar facilities, restaurants, noises that were happening from entertainments that went on till eleven P M. I don't know about pet shops, but it, it's one of those situations that it, you know, when I was younger, Cupertino was a real hotspot nightclub land. I mean, it, when I was going to De Anza, there was lots of stuff going on here. And at two A M, stuff was rocking. I mean, it's, Apple was over there, et cetera, et cetera. And we had another really great nightclub on Sunnyvale, Saratoga. But I'm just saying that I don't want those decisions to be done at the administrative hearing. This is stuff that concerns everybody in Cupertino. If at two A M you can't sleep because there's a backbeat going on under your bed, you need to be able to come into chambers and talk about it. So I really, and I, yeah, I understand there's a cost factor, but that isn't, that, that doesn't cut it. You need, I mean, I've seen these chambers filled up when there were issues with noises at, it was what was in Maricay before. Okay, the neighbors behind, that is a long-term backstory. But I think that we probably don't need to do this, keep them at the planning commission level. And don't sell live animals at the flea market. I mean, at the farmer's market, it sounds weird. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. We now have two hands raised on Zoom. Rhoda Frye followed by San R. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, good evening. I concur.
Hi, good evening. Um, I concur with Jennifer, Jennifer's comments. Um, I think that we need to keep the sanctity of the planning commission. Um, residents are really clamoring for more transparency, especially because of the budget woes. And I'd prefer to not see items moved into the administrative realm where there, it's really harder for the public to get involved. The second thing is, as a farmer's market, I want to thank SEMA for taking my call today. Um, you've got some furious emails from me, uh, yeah, on this afternoon because I was, now I'm at the San Francisco International Airport. Um, I'm glad I was able to get on. And, um, you know, there, there is something, there's certified, um, farmer's market. The farmer's markets were created by the California Department of Agriculture in order to keep farmers in business, basically. And of course, secondly, is to bring farm products to residents. And a lot of these farmers do come from quite a distance. They're not just Santa Clara County. Um, some of them are traveling quite a distance, but it is worthwhile. Um, and actually you do get fewer miles traveled when you buy produce at a farmer's market, much less so than at a supermarket. So even though that, that farmer is traveling quite a distance from their farm to our city, it is actually a greener option than going with a supermarket, plus, of course, your produce is fresher. The second type of merchant you have typically at a farmer's market is a, is a vendor that is, uh, selling food under a, um, under a, um, Department of Environmental Health permit to serve foods. It could be, it could be even coffee, it could be, uh, it could be other things, baked goods, et cetera, thing, or, or even meats and fish and whatnot. Um, and then, you know, actually, one, at one market, I saw a vendor that was selling, you know, fish from Alaska. And that just doesn't seem to be quite right for a farmer's market. But here's the, here's the bugaboo for me. It's that twenty-four, twenty-five percent, exactly what SEMA was talking about. You know, uh, solar roof companies, uh, you know, Verizon, life insurance, et cetera. We don't want those in our farmer's market. You don't see them in, uh, Mountain View. You don't see it at Saratoga. Those are class A, class markets, and that's what we want to have. I, I can see that, um, having a certain amount of crafts would be nice, especially if they're, um, you know, local crafts to Santa Clara County. Um, and of course, if it's the person who's made it, sold it, or somebody who works for them. Um, I would like to actually see this whole farmer's market thing completely scrapped. At most, we're not going to have more than, you know, one or two, or maybe even three farmer's markets in our city. So I think it's, it's really excessive to, um, add that. And finally, cost should not be a barrier to businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. San R., welcome.
Good evening, Chair Feng and commissioners. Um, I would like to see what problem are we trying to solve? I hear, uh, our staff describing the cost of these use permits. And if cost is the issue, let's drop the cost. That's an easy problem to solve. And if the reason for the cost is to recoup the overheads that staffing require to meet these conditional use permits, then let's assess that and focus on what is the driver of that cost. I would like us to drop the cost, make it easier for business, but not take away the ability to have transparency and public input on this process. I think it is critical that as we continue to grow and expand, we don't make it arbitrary for staff to use the discretion to allow or disallow businesses, particularly restaurants and bars, particularly bars, in, uh, some suburban neighborhoods that can affect the value of that neighborhood, create noise pollution, create safety issues and so on. And to place that kind of power in the hands of, uh, one individual, however skilled and, uh, and reasonable they may be, is not appropriate. This is really in the, in the realm of, uh, the public providing that input. I would like to see us understand what farmer's market problem are we solving and why are we adding clauses that we don't need? So let's, let's really kind of question, what problem are we solving and is this the right solution to the problem? I'd like to see the farmer's market clause dropped entirely. Uh, I'd, I'd also like to understand when we have this odor abatement, what does it mean? How do you measure odor? I'm really concerned that this allows for targeting of Indian and Asian restaurants on subjective clauses. Uh, there may be, uh, you know, Caucasian restaurants that have no odor. And we may have significant odor from Indian and Asian restaurants, who's to decide, uh, that one odor is affected and the other is not? There's no metric. Instead of odor, we should have G H G abatement. Let's focus on G H G that can be measured. Order cannot be measured. So I'd like to understand what's the basis for this order abatement? Um, I'd also like to understand why certain things are codified versus just put in, in the climate action plan, for example. Different cities have gone different routes, but most of the cities have not codified, with the exception of San Jose, in the area of odor abatement. Absent actual metrics, I don't think this should be codified, particularly in a city with majority Asian and Indian demographic, where this will particularly harm the Indian and Asian demographic. Um, and, and finally, I'd also like to call out that the twenty percent limit on outdoor seating must be lifted. We would like to see more outdoor seating. Outdoor seating contributes to the quality of life of our residents. So please eliminate the twenty percent and raise that limit so that we can have more outdoor seating and enjoy what limited restaurants we have. Uh, I take my business and my family's business every week in downtowns outside of Cupertino that have pleasant.
Thank you, Sam. That concludes your time.
Very good. Thank you very much. Uh, we can bring back up here for a discussion now, please. Okay, thank you. Um, so first, I would not want to combine convenience stores with grocery stores in the same category. I think they're very different. Um, they have different impacts. The convenience store, like a seven eleven, is typically operating twenty-four seven. It's selling a lot more, higher percentage of, um, alcohol. It's attracting, um, different, different types of customers. Uh, so I think equating a seven eleven with a Whole Foods doesn't seem logical. Um, and I would still like to have use permits for convenience stores. I can kind of see not having them for supermarkets, but even then, the supermarkets often have, um, facilities that do generate, uh, issues like, like odors if they're, um, you know, a lot, a lot of the markets are, are cooking things, uh, frying things. I think a use permit is logical. Um, I don't, I think, I agree with SEMA about the farmer's market. Just scrap the seventy-five percent. It's a farmer's market. All the booths need to be selling produce from farmers. Um, yeah, we don't need cram schools or insurance companies or cell phone carriers or life insurance or mortgage companies in that twenty-five percent. Let's just say it's a farmer's market. Um, I want to know, the outdoor seating limit, is that based on the restaurant's property? Or is that based on them using city property for outdoor seating?
Uh, private property.
Oh, okay. So what is the reason why you would say you, they could only have twenty percent?
Um, my only, it's an arbitrary number. I, I, I don't know. It goes back a long time. It predates my time at the city. Uh, probably someone on council said thirty, no, ten, let's go twenty.
All right. So then I, then I agree with the speaker, um, San R., that, you know, the twenty percent, you know, if it's, if it's the restaurant's property, they should be able to apportion it however they want.
So Stephen, I clarified this, uh, with PU before the meeting. It is an arbitrary number.
Okay.
And through the chair, if I, if I can help you with your point too, you know, some cities like, um, Mountain View, some of their specific plans and stuff like that, just, just look at the parking impact as well with this. So it says, assigning a percentage, they just say, okay, is there a parking impact with this or traffic? Not necessarily traffic, but parking impact with.
You mean, you think there'd be more parking impact if they had outdoor seating?
Well, if it's combined with the indoor seating, I think that, that's how they analyze it.
So they're analyzing that the outdoor is like an addition.
Right.
To the indoor, not in place of it.
And I'm just throwing that out there. You can say, just scrap it and, and.
I mean, I mean, like I know in Berkeley, I was reading that restaurants were using public parking spaces for outdoor seating. So now they have to pay the city what the city loses in parking revenue from those parking spaces. But we're not talking about anything like that here.
No, because I don't think we even have a part of the city where that's possible. I think maybe Montevista would be that part of Stevens Creek and Montevista, probably the only neighborhood where we'd have that, that type of want to do it, if, if that, so.
Okay, so I'll continue. So regarding the cost of the use permit. Yeah, I agree with some other speakers that really should not be an issue. I mean, let's say the city just gave a developer seventy-seven million dollars by waiving impact fees. And if twenty-four thousand versus ten thousand is a problem, maybe the city can let the business pay the fee over time or even subsidize part of it, just in order to get these businesses into the city. And then regarding changing to administrative versus planning commission. Um, so my concern is residents really want transparency. They're already unhappy about the increasing lack of transparency that we've seen in, in our city. A meeting at five P M. is not really accessible to the public as much as a evening meeting of the council or planning commission. And I, and I don't think that making these decisions less transparent is something that residents would favor. Um, you know, yes, it, yes, it may cost more, but, you know, that's the cost of doing business. Um, we want them to be able to weigh in on whether or not they think, uh, these uses should be approved. And if these permit changes would affect their neighborhood that's adjacent to the businesses. And that's it. Thank you.
Next, anybody?
I had one clarification question in regards, oh, wait a minute. In regards to the bar facility and the restaurant having a bar facility versus an actual establishment that's a bar. Um, there's one thing that I've seen that's happening quite a bit in hotels specifically, where they'll have essentially a self-service bar. Um, it's not a, it's not a person behind the bar serving the drinks. It'll be coming out of a machine that, um, you pay with your credit card and you basically validate your, um, age. So this is something that's now coming up in a lot of hotels because they don't have staff to have a bartender. When I said that I was worried about us defining things so, um, so prescriptively, something like this would automatically fall out of what we're now trying to do. And I feel like it creates more problems than resolves with them because it's not being flexible. So I just, I was pointing that out in, in hopes that we can try to be less prescriptive with what we do because it just, it seems like we're creating bureaucracy here. So again, I don't think we need to write something about what I was just speaking about because we don't, don't even have that situation here. But it's going to come. It'll definitely be here soon. So again, I, I, yeah, I, it kind of goes with what we were talking about with, um, gosh, I mean, it's.
Farmer's market.
Yeah, the farmer's market. I, I really have a problem with why we're doing this farmer's market as a, as a separate conditional use.
Yeah.
So, uh, yeah, so I, I'd like to seek some clarification on, um, the bar versus restaurant versus, you know, uh, s- something else. Like, I felt like, you know, there was things being mixed up and, you know, and to a point where, you know, people are going to lose the opportunity to weigh in, right? Uh, because I personally went through one of those, so I, so I know what it is like. So, um, if you don't have, you know, checks and balances, it could get really worse. So for example, in my case, the person was seeking, um, music and whatnot, you know, bar drinks being served. It's a restaurant, but they wanted to go till two A M., right? And so I said, you know, no, nine o'clock, the last drink gets served at nine o'clock. The restaurant closes at, you know, ten. So what do you need a permit, you know, till two A M., right? So I, I think, you know, we need residents, the community to be able to weigh in on these things. And, you know, I, I want them to have an opportunity. So I don't want us to dilute or take away that opportunity.
One more clarif- kind, clarifying question. With restaurant and the fast food self-service, I don't think we have this situation here yet, but, um, where would drive-throughs fall into this?
So, yeah, so those are still requiring use permit at the planning commission level. And we have existing policy that limits their locations, uh, throughout the city. So that wouldn't change. So if a McDonald's was, were going to come in, where Kilt, as an example, see, the Kilton unit, there's going to be a McDonald's proposed there. What we're saying is that wouldn't require use permit, that'd be permitted by right. But if a McDonald's was, was going to, was going to go into a standalone building with a drive-through, that still, even with the staff's, uh, draft change, will require use permit. So that's not changing.
Okay.
At the planning commission level.
Okay, so, um, in regards to changing the approval authority for, from a use permit planning commission to the use permit admin hearing, um, I'm okay with that because, uh, I feel like our small businesses are struggling. Um, we lose more of them every day. A lot of them haven't recovered from COVID. Um, the costs are going up, staffing is becoming more difficult. Um, I, I think we should become a more small business friendly city. And if we can make it easier, uh, to get some of these permitting done with the administrative hearing, I would rather have the cost be on the back end rather than the front end. So we make it easier for businesses to come into our city. And then if they, um, cause any problems with odor or noise or whatever, then we have a remedy at the end and they incur the cost at the end for the small, small percentage of businesses that, uh, are not good citizens of our city, right? Instead of putting the cost on ninety-eight percent of the businesses that are going to be good citizens of our city and will, you know, follow the rules appropriately, um, we don't want to penalize them. Um, so I would rather put it, put the cost on the back end than the front end. Um, so, so I'm okay with changing the approval authority, um, for these, for these, um, establishments, these uses that you have listed here. Um, couple of things. One is, um, eating establishments that want to offer entertainment. Um, you moved it down from planning commission to admin level. Um, I would move it down further to just permit it. Um, and the reason for that is as long as they are compliant in every other way, like they close at nine or, you know, whatever other rules they are subject to. Um, you know, like I go to other cities, like, you know, I think I was talking in a planning commission meeting a year ago, and I was talking about how I went to Los Altos downtown and they had live music in like three or four restaurants as you're walking down, downtown Los Altos. And it was wonderful. It was really nice. And, and I remember coming to this planning commission and saying, why can't we have that, right? And, and here we are, a year later, making this decision as to whether we can have that or not as a city. So yes, let's, let's make it friendlier for our businesses to offer live music, subject to noise conditions, subject to parking conditions, subject to times of, you know, when they're open and they're not. Not loosening any of those regulations, but let's make it easier for them to have a guitarist playing songs outside a cafe, you know? It's like, like we do in Palo Alto and we love that. Let's bring it here. Um, and then the third one is the outdoor seating. So, uh, yeah, I, I don't know why we have the twenty percent. So I did some Googling on that one as well. And, um, and I really like what Mountain View has done. And yes, I know they have a pedestrian thing and they have parking garages and it is not an apples to apples. I recognize that. Um, but if you read their municipal code on outdoor seating, it is a lot simpler. There is no twenty percent. Um, they do allow use of public space as long as you are ADA compliant and there's space for people to walk through. Um, it's just easier, it's simpler, it's permitted. Um, everyone loves outdoor seating. We all love the vibrancy it brings to the cities. We love it in Mountain View. We love it in Los Altos. Let's love it in Cupertino too. So those would be my comments.
Thanks. Probably my turn. So I get a couple of inter- comments here. The first one for me, it was interesting, you know, we had in, in the, um, clarifying question section or the section that was supposed to be bad. Uh, we had a lot of discussion about farmer's markets. I actually, um, would, would agree with Commissioner Sharf. I think that the convenience store was the one that actually stuck out, stuck out to me. Um, grouping together, you know, specialty food store and supermarket or market. Uh, yeah, I, I don't see an issue there. I do think, uh, you know, the notable factor about a convenience store is the, usually the hours and availability. And that's actually the impact, um, uh, the area of impact on the community. So, so I would actually, uh, recommend that, uh, you know, consider, um, consider changing, moving that, that one part out. In, in, with regard to the farmer's market discussion, I would be interested in, you know, in a lot of these cases, when, when this study is done, there was a study that was, which looked at surrounding communities. It would be great to report on that. I think that would actually be one that, not necessarily as a, you know, we will only do this because Palo Alto did it or, or Mountain View, but just to understand, you know, fully understanding that maybe they just, they had some old law that they hadn't looked at in a long time versus somebody who recently changed it. But I think there is some value in, in hearing that. Outdoor seating was raised several years ago when I served with Jeff Paulson. That was actually one of his crusading things was to, why is there the limit on, the arbitrary limit on outdoor seating? When it is private space. So that would be something that, I think it's out of the scope of this discussion, but you know, or maybe not, not if it's one of those, if it's one of these regulations. To perhaps have a discussion around outdoor seating. Again, let's look at what people are doing. Now, I think there's a lot of COVID effect. You know, Mountain View, I think Mountain View was actually pretty restrictive back in the old days. Yeah.
No, they were still better than us.
Uh, yeah, yeah. Well, because they have more of a downtown. Los Altos has actually come up a couple of times, both in this section and in the previous one. And there, you know, there's something completely different happening in Los Altos. A lot of the character of the downtown was the result of Pessaral, the folks who lived there. They're probably familiar with that, but there was a a, a corporation, I think it's a corporation or a nonprofit, that was promoting, making Los Altos friendly. It is funded by Sergey Brin. They put a lot of money into it. That's where some of those things like the really cool pinball machine kind of arcade comes from. Or the fact that, you know, when you go to, when you go to the pizza place, you know, again, they have, you know, those sorts of things or elements. The really, the really amazing breakfast place that unfortunately isn't there anymore. So there's something different that was driving that. And probably something that's difficult to capture. But at the same time, you know, I guess I would also say, I think that after a number of hearings, when I have had occasion to talk with applicants, they did come. I remember specifically having this with the Starbucks that's by the post office. You know, they're very nice people and they were very happy to, you know, to do, you know, do the community outreach, put the thing there. They could have been happier about the cost of the permit. And, you know, I don't think that we're actually trying for that to be a profit center or an income center. I think that we're trying to recapture costs and I could be wrong. If that's the case, then, then I think, yeah, you want to do, maybe take a bit of a look at this as to, you know, as to, is there high value? You know, we have, we have advocates here today who, who, you know, gone through that. It really is, is there high value in, in having, having a public hearing where there may not be a lot of, a lot of input? So I generally don't have a problem with, with the categories, with the exception of convenience store, because I think that really was something different. I didn't have an issue with the, the discussion about moving to administrative approval with the, you know, with the, it's not really a caveat, but just to note the fact that the conditions really are applying, you know, it's the same conditions being applied in the same way. It's just a matter of how the, of how the decision, you know, the, the actual decision is, is being made. And I think, I think that was, I think that was it. I, I, I would say, you know, sometimes these, these are interesting when these pop up, the revisit of existing code. You know, sometimes I think that it's just, it may be just a matter of the fact that, you know, an application came through and in the process of research, you realize, okay, maybe we've gotten out of step. But again, again, in general, I think, you know, plying an eye toward what are the things we can do that make it, you know, that reasonably address the concerns of people, you know, real concerns that people have and balance that with, you know, how do we make this more affordable or reduce the barrier of entry for people to, to try to, you know, go find their, their enterprise? So, very good. Thank you.
So, yeah, so just for the record, now I just want to be clear, right? So on the administrative hearing versus, you know, the planning commission approval on the exceptions or deviations, I want to be on the record saying, you know, it needs to go through planning commission. I'm not in favor of not administrative approvals because it's less transparent. You know, people don't get an opportunity to talk, right, about these things. And it's not a situation, I mean, I can't imagine, you know, somebody is going to, you know, decide whether to do business in Cupertino or not to do business in Cupertino for that ten thousand dollar no fee. It's not a situation where, you know, the planning commission is so backed up, you know, where, you know, that these hearings don't happen. They have to wait for, you know, six months or a year. If that's the case, then I can see, you know, moving it down to administrative hearing, you know, makes sense. We canceled, you know, almost two thirds of the meetings. We don't have enough, right? So, so that being the case, you know, trying to move these things, you know, further dilute, you know, the planning commission authority and the transparency, transparency is not the right thing to do. Because there's a lot of, you know, complaints from residents just on the housing element, right? The first draft went through extensive, you know, hearing and public inputs. But the next few drafts, there were no hearings. There is no planning commission meetings. And me being a commissioner, a lot of people come and ask me, you know, why that's the case. I don't have an answer, right? So, so we need to be transparent and we need to make these things accessible to residents so that they can input in. I don't want us to kind of dilute that.
So just as a clarification, though, if you have an administrative hearing to approve something, you will hear the public, I mean, I used to, back when we had the, the design review and things like that, you know, people did come and they spoke just like they do here.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it is at five P M. On a Thursday, it's noticed the same way. It's appealable to the planning commission. They generally come up when there's a need. Sometimes there's, there's a lengthy gap between hearings. Sometimes we'll have several in a month. So it gets on an agenda a little bit quicker, but the format is really the same. There's a staff report, staff presentation is very similar to here. Usually there's more people in attendance, but on occasions like tonight, planning commission slightly attended too. So it's really just a cost issue.
Can I, I feel like you were about to answer. Where does the big difference between the administrative hearing and a planning commission meeting as far as the cost? What, where, where does that money go?
That was my question too, because I don't think it's the money we get paid for these meetings.
Definitely not.
I'll advocate for that. A lot of time in your head. No, it's, you know, the, the city over the years has done lengthy, you know, of cost analysis and whatnot. We just completed one within the last year. Where, you know, we look at the staff time that takes to, to notice a meeting, to write staff reports, attend these meetings and whatnot, and what the collaboration with other staff members too, you know, you know, with the, with the P C item. I might have to be a little more cautious, you know, in, in my review. I mean, all my reviews are cautious, of course, but, you know, who do I have to collaborate with? My director, my assistant director, even, you know, some of the, the admin staff as well. So that's all factored into it. Even the intangibles like, you know, someone who says, you know, if another city like Sunnyvale with a bar with a separate restaurant or accessory restaurant with a bar facility, excuse me, you know, they're an admin level, admin use permit, where a planning commission use permit. You know, they hear planning commission, they get scared. It's a little more of a discretion, you know, and whereas, you know, instead of having one person who's the director approving an item, you know, it's, it's five to seven people who have different opinions. That could add more conditions of approval. You know, again, that's their perception. Doesn't mean it's true. I mean, the hearing officer is gonna look objectively into this. To in fact, look, correct me if I'm wrong, you don't even review the staff reports prior to going to hearing. It's.
No, I cannot be involved in the preparation of staff report. It, it really is, I mean, we just had a new fee schedule go in two months ago and it is based on estimates of staff time. That a higher level hearing is gonna have more staff review it, review it for longer periods of time, likely be more responsive to the public because there'll be more inquiries. So, I mean, I would agree that a six forty-five meeting at a regularly, the planning commission has regular intervals. Public's gonna be more aware of that. For an admin hearing, you have to get the notice because they don't happen reliably on every Thursday. But the format is the same. It's appealable. Yeah.
So I just want to add, before this meeting, I talked to the previous executive director of the Chamber of Commerce and got his feedback on the outdoor seating condition that, that is being considered today. And because, you know, he was with the, with the chamber for years and years. And, and he gave me several specific examples of small businesses that chose not to have outdoor seating or have music because the cost was so prohibitively high. So I know for us, it doesn't sound that much where it's like, oh, what's the difference? Eleven thousand, twenty-seven thousand, you know, it's all good. But to a small business, that does make a difference. And it is, it is something that is, that is hampering our businesses from doing what is best for them to be, to thrive. Because keep in mind, when you add outdoor seating, you have to meet parking requirements as, you know, as staff told us. So it's not just the cost of the permit, right? There's other costs associated, but, but the permit is, is a big chunk of that. And, and if you're not sure you're gonna get it, it is, it is hurting our city, our, our, our city small businesses. And it is something that we have the power to do more. So I, I hear the thing about the convenience stores. I'm fine with keeping that as a planning commission level use permit. But for the others, I think moving them to admin hearing, especially given all the information we have, it is still transparent. It's a different process than our residents are used to. But it is equally accessible and they have the opportunity to, to give input. The, sorry, I know, I know you want to talk, but just give me one quick second. One other thing is, in terms of the, the permitting costs, I did do a little bit of Googling again. And our costs do seem quite a bit higher than those of, I mean, a lot higher than the ones of surrounding cities. I was kind of shocked. And, and I know that's not within the scope of today's conversation, so, you know, not asking. And I know our city council just agreed on some new costs, so, fine. But it is a lot higher than other cities. So, so keeping that in mind also is another reason we should be moving down to admin because, God, that's, you know, like, we are not making it easy for any business to decide to come to Cupertino. I mean, I don't know how they do the math to come to Cupertino because the, the, the financial math sure seems difficult. And if we can, if, instead of looking at the permitting, I would like us to look at what's the overall R O I. To the city. So if we reduce the cost of permitting, we reduce the, the permitting income that the city gets, right? I get that. But do we make that up in terms of more thriving businesses that drive more sales tax? You know, it's like, what is the net R O I. To us as a city? And my guess is if we did the math, we would find that it's a net positive for us to make it easier for businesses to operate in our city and to thrive in our city and to collect the sales tax on it versus putting up barriers right up front that prevents businesses from coming in or growing in our city.
Yeah, I would just comment that, you know, when somebody, when an applicant comes like, like Starbucks, they do, they're very, very sensitive to what the permitting costs are. So, you know, and it, you know, that's something that they mentioned that as well, that, you know, it's higher to do this, do this here. That's okay. I mean, they made a decision they wanted to be here, so it's just, you know, we should pay what we pay. Yeah, I do, I do think, you know, for instance, for Starbucks, the, the reason that they would have to come here was that they wanted a variation from the condition use permit to open early. And so, you know, I think that, that, that's an example of one where, whether it's the cost or whatever, I mean, that, that was one that was gonna have to come to the planning commission anyway, so, yeah. But for somebody, if you were reading, a little funny for a coffee shop to open at nine A M., but if that was okay, then, you know, then I think the, the, you know, the bump, the, you know, the additional benefit from having, having, you know, slightly lower permit cost does have some value. It, in the big picture, not a giant thing.
So to me, I, I think, you know, this ten thousand dollar difference in the permitting costs upfront, I don't think, you know, that's a make or break for businesses, right? I agree that, no, we need to support, we need to. Pardon?
Eleven to twenty-seven, no, so.
Eleven to twenty-four or whatever, right? So to me, you know, the, the kind of things that we do that kill small businesses is, you know, for example, I talked to at least two small businesses, you know, on D'Anza Boulevard, right? Because I had an opportunity to talk to them. They are so upset about, you know, the bike lanes that are coming because they are afraid that, you know, that they're getting in and out of those shops is going to be so challenging, right? And so they are so upset. And those are the kind of things that, no, we need to evaluate, right? So not about, you know, the upfront.
All right, I'm just gonna address this. There is already a bike lane on D'Anza. Nothing is changing for those businesses. And I think it's, it's detrimental to our businesses to give them misleading information.
That's what I, I'm just sharing, you know, what I heard, okay? So, so, right, so, so I think, you know, we need to create conditions for businesses, existing businesses to succeed, right? And, and so.
Okay, I will also add that the data shows that people who bike to businesses actually spend more and are, are better for the economy than people who drive to businesses. And the data is there and I'm happily, happily will send it to you at some later date.
So I'm gonna interrupt, I apologize. But Chair, I, I think to frame the discussion further, maybe appropriate time to get a motion and then that would frame further discussion.
Yeah, I think so. We've, we've all had a chance to comment. Can we, can we make a motion or do we want to have a discussion around the elements of what a motion might be?
I mean, it sounds like we have enough adjustments to the existing proposal that, I mean, what, what's the best course of action here to suggest all of our changes and make a motion based on those changes or to ask?
We could try to see if we come to consensus on the.
So to me, you know, it seems like a spaghetti right now, like, you know, the bunch of things. So I would rather like to see it, send it back and, you know, come back with a clean proposal based incorporating all these changes and then vote on it, right? Like, you know, in the next opportunity where here are the changes, right? The new terminology getting introduced, here is a redefinition of, you know, the existing terminologies. And, you know, here is, you know, the authority changes, right? So, so that, you know, we have clear distinction of, you know, what it is that we are voting on. Right now, we know, we have a bunch of things and we all have, gave a lot of inputs, but we're gonna be here, you know, debating about those.
I would, I would tend to agree just because I think there's like four different topics here and I think we're gonna have adjustments to every single one. I would almost make a motion for each specific change separately.
Yeah, I have.
Can we suggest doing that?
I was gonna suggest and hopefully we have the same four things. It seemed like there were four topic areas that maybe if you considered them separately, if it's farmer's market, whether it's definition or the percentage, admin versus P C streamlining as an issue, outdoor seating and also convenience store definition, should that be treated separately? Those are really the four.
We can't, I don't want to craft a resolution sitting here, you know, it's like writing a letter with the committee. So I kind of agree with Josh that we maybe bring it back once, once you make all these changes. I mean, is there some kind of rush to do this or?
No, there is no rush.
Yeah, we're, we're, I'm sorry. No, go ahead. Oh, we're tentatively scheduled for, for reading a council October first, so, but I, it's.
I'm ready to make a motion if you guys want. I mean, I know we have four topics, but I, I, I don't think it's that complicated. But, you know, feel free, maybe I'm, I'm the only one who thinks that. So.
As, as long as you don't tell us we have to, we have to, among the five of us raise the twenty-five thousand to pay for the, Leah Nick's hearing that we're.
Yeah, that was gonna be part of the motion.
Yeah.
No, before I make the motion, so basically what I'm thinking is we say that we, we follow the Palo Alto farmer's market definition because that, all that says is that we follow the, the certified farmer's market definition from the Department of Agriculture, which is very straightforward. We, we take away the twenty percent on outdoor seating. As long as the business meets the parking requirements per seat outlined in the municipal code to make sure there's no parking issues. We keep convenience stores as a use permit for the planning commission and use approval. And the fourth one is for, this might be just mine, but for eating establishments that want to offer entertainment, make that a permitted use, subject to, of course, all the other municipal code requirements. make that a permitted use, subject to, of course, all the other municipal code requirements.
So Commissioner, am I hearing you to say that you're going to move staff's recommendation with the, with the exceptions you just identified?
Correct.
Is that your motion?
Well, I just want to check and see.
Well, you can make that motion and see at the end of the second.
I'll make that motion then, that we adopt staff recommendation with these four, uh, edits, that we adopt the Palo Alto farmer's market definition, that we make eating establishments that want to offer entertainment subject to just permitted use, and that we, um, take away the 20% limit on outdoor seating as long as the business meets the parking requirements per seat outlined in the municipal code. And we keep convenience stores as a use permit planning commission land use process.
There's something about, you know, there was something about a restaurant versus, you know, the bar definition change or, or.
What was that?
It's not necessarily a change from what's existing, it's more of a clarification. You know, there's a couple of those clarifications, where's that? The, um, we added standards like the, the, the restaurant bar can't stay open later than when food's served, although food can be served later than when the bar is open. There has to be, it has to be ancillary to the food service. So like, let me give an example, Alexander Steakhouse is a, is a, is a high-end example of, of like, uh, of a, um, a restaurant eating establishment with a bar facility, okay? You know, Paul and Eddie's is considered a drinking establishment. That would still need to come in, something similar that would still need to come in through with the use permit with the planning, through the planning commission. Whereas something like Alexander, that's more of a use permit admin level approval.
So Commissioner Linska, were you done with your motion?
I'm done with my motion, yes.
I'll second it. Okay.
Can I ask for maybe a clarification from staff here? If you wanted to have a eating establishment and have music, that, that is one of the categories defined today. It just is one that requires coming here, right?
Yeah, we didn't, um, there's no definition, uh, currently with, we just say entertainment, you know? To be honest, I mean, staff has interpreted someone with a guitar, not necessarily entertainment. But if it's, if it's, if it's like an acoustic guitar, some guy, you know, at a table with an acoustic guitar, I mean, that's. You know, or, or banjo, whatever, some string instrument. But if it's, if it's amplified, you know, or there's multi-piece, you know, band that's amplified, I mean, that's, that's really kind of the internal threshold we use.
It's still subject to the noise.
Absolutely, yeah, that's all subject to the noise.
Okay. So we have second?
We have a second, yeah.
Yeah. If, if there's any further discussion on these items, anything that was missed? I think we can vote.
Yeah, so can I clarify?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, so since everything is lumped together, right? So if, if, I, I like some of the adjustments made to the motion, like for example, in the farmer's market and, you know, relaxing the parking and all that, right? But given that, you know, the administrative, um, you know, planning commission versus an administrative hearing thing, that to me is no. So because everything is lumped together, so I'm going to vote no. So I'm just clarifying it because I, people kind of, you know, don't necessarily understand why somebody votes no, right? So.
Yeah, I agree with Mooney, um, except for the administrative hearing part, because I would prefer to be more transparent, I'm going to vote no.
Maybe it's a good idea to separate that.
I'm not sure, I believe that there's a difference in transparency though. I mean, the, the hearing itself is the same.
It's not, it's, it's five o'clock versus, I mean, they even mentioned that there was a difference, so.
They said that, you know, the level of details they go through and all that.
Have a motion and a second. If you guys want to entertain a subsequent motion, you're welcome to do so.
No, I'll just vote.
You can vote with your opinion.
The motion carries with Mani Putla and Scharf voting no.
Great. Okay, that completes our hearings. There is no old business, no new business on the report. Staff and commission reports. Staff report.
Um, I actually have not so much a report, but just something I promised I would say is I believe you all received a survey about 6:00 PM today that is open for two weeks on what would be good potential questions for future commissioners. I think that's what it's about because I wasn't involved in it. But I wanted to remind everybody here that you got that. You have two weeks before the survey closes and it would be appreciated if commissioners could respond to that. And that concludes staff's reports.
And then commission reports. Okay. Future agenda setting, any items to report there, that people would like to bring up?
I mean, sorry, I mean, I would love to have us review our permit fees versus other cities, but I know the council already just did that, so I guess, I mean, it's, it sounds like they already agreed and voted, so we don't need to, but yeah.
I'm not, we had this discussion informally in the past and I think it was not clear that, I mean, for some reason, some, some things, the costs were high here versus other places. So, yeah. Anyway, okay, with that, we have completed our agenda for this evening and it's 8:41. Uh, the meeting is now adjourned.